I'd like to call the meeting to order. Escanaba City Council, Thursday, February 3rd, 2022. Roll call, please.
Councilor Moore.
Here.
Councilor Boshaw.
Here.
Councilor DuBord.
Here.
Councilor Flath.
Here.
Mayor Hamlin.
Here. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Seeking approval or corrections to the minutes from the regular meeting from January 20th, 2022.
Just a comment regarding the appointment that we shouldn't have made?
Yes, I believe in... I believe Mr. Demme has made that change, correct?
Yes.
It was in the packet. So, on that, that was a misinterpretation of an email sent to me by Mr. Demme, who notified that Patrick O'Connor had applied for a board seat. And him being out with his family being sick, I thought I would help him out and just take care of the rest of it. And I pointed someone to a seat that was not available. So Patrick Connor has been notified of this and understands, and he is on the waiting list behind the other applicants. Any further questions?
There's nothing that council needs to officially do to undo?
No, no, we just go, oops, and I'm very sorry. And as long as it's properly notated in here as a correction, we can accept. If anyone?
Move approval.
Second. Motion, second, all in favor? Aye. Aye. opposed? Thank you. Moving on to approval and adjustments to the agenda. Are there any adjustments anyone here needs to make to the agenda? I would like to add an item in the interest of clarity. I would like to add new business item number five. Board seeks approval to create an ad hoc committee for the purpose of reviewing proposals received in response to the RFQ sent out for the jail property site. This committee will also make a recommendation to council.
Move approval of the agenda with the modification?
Seeking support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you, moving on. Any conflict of interest to declare at this point? Hearing none, we'll move on. Do we have any brief public comments, any items regarding the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Scott Sezak. I'm the executive director of the Escanaba DDA. I'm here to speak to new business number one. As you're aware in the packet, you had a letter from us regarding this and why we are seeking this change. There was a bit of a discussion this week about why we chose the city managers plus the mayor. And the clerk was kind enough to send you, to give to you all tonight, an additional memo about that. Just to briefly go over it, there has been discussion about MCL 1254204, about what chief executive officer means of the municipality or his or her designee from the governing bodies. The language is causing a bit of an issue. There is actually a definitional area early in the act, section 125.4201, which says basically it could be the mayor or the city manager of a city. And the township portion says whoever they designate, so I don't know if that's applicable. So therefore, I actually went into Black's Law Dictionary, which if you're a lawyer, you know, that's where you go to define things. And I have the whole definition there, and I'm not going to bore you with it. But in my opinion, with what the DDA board said, we believe the city manager does best fit the phrase chief executive officer as defined in both the law and Black's Law Dictionary. As this is the first reading and you're going to have a public hearing, there'll be chances to talk about some of the other things that I have questions about, namely the reduction in the DDA board from eight to seven, which I think is in conflict with the MCL. And also the appointment process, which is still going to be with the mayor, even though it says whoever is designated the chief executive officer is supposed to do the appointment. So there's a couple of things I want to review before I go whole hog on this. But just, I want to make you aware of what I wrote today to make sure you see exactly where, I'm not just pulling this out of just my interpretation. It's based on what both Black Letter Law from the Michigan compiled law says and also from Black's Law Dictionary. So that's what I wanted to say. Thank you very much, and have a good meeting.
Thank you. Any other public comment on items on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on. Public hearings. Hearing none, we'll move on. Unfinished business, we have none. Moving on to new business item number one. First reading of ordinance number 1256. An ordinance to amend Chapter 9 Community Development as codified under the Code of Ordinances and setting the date of Thursday, February 17th, 2022 for the second reading, public hearing, and adoption.
Administration is requesting city council to consider this, the first reading of ordinance number 1256, an ordinance to amend Chapter 9 Community Development as codified under the Code of Ordinances, section 9-66, DDA Board of Trustees Voting Members. Administration is requesting that the city council set February 17, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. for the second reading, public hearing, adoption of ordinance number 1256.
Patrick, do we have legal counsel review this, or did we have any legal counsel review everything?
I had some legal counsel review, and I had also Scott McInnes that did the board training from MML. He's a seasoned city manager, retired. He sat on DDAs before. He confirmed with me that, yeah, the chief executive officer is the manager. The manager sits in the DEA. I was just, I wanted, you know, in reading Act 572018, that's only a few years old. So it's not, the whole thing hasn't evolved a whole lot since then. And using some deductive reasoning when it says consisting of the chief executive officer or his or her designee from the governing body. I don't have designees on this governing body, only the mayor does. So I deduced that he's the chief executive officer. Further down, it does say the CEO appoints members, which is correct, he does. But a little further down, the other one that I underlined was the rules of procedure or the bylaws of the authority may provide that a person be appointed to the board in his or her capacity as a public official, either appointed or elected. So I can be, I can be the appointed member of the DDA, and the statute allows for it. So I didn't mean to make a mountain out of a molehill, but I wanted to be sure, so.
I believe we need a motion to set the date of Thursday, February 17th, 2022 for the second reading.
I make a motion to set the date of Thursday, February 17th, for the second reading of public hearing, an ordinance to amend Chapter 9 Community Development as codified under the Code of Ordinances.
Seeking support? I'll second that. Mr. Demme, we have a roll call.
Councilor Moore.
Yes.
Councilor DuBord.
Aye.
Councilor Boshaw.
Yes.
Councilor Flath.
Yes.
Mayor Hamlin.
Yes. Moving on, new business item number two. Approval Notice of Intent Resolution for Water Supply System Bonds, Water Department.
Administration is requesting for city council to pass the attached notice of intent resolution. This resolution authorizes the publication of a notice of intent relating to the city's bonds to be issued through the Michigan Finance Authority's Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Program.
In case there's any clarity that's needed, this differs from last week's intent to apply for future loans that may come. This is an intent to bond. So providing notice to the ratepayers that we are going in and we're going to ask for bonding. The ratepayers have a chance to review and ask questions, and they'll come back sometime in March. We'll be back here looking at bonding for the $10.5 million in the projects that are going on now. And with all hopes, we won't bond for more than four million-ish if we get all of... the bids come in right, and we get all of our free monies and our grants and our loan forgivenesses. That 10-5 project will only be four million or so in debt for the bonding. I don't know if I explained that very well.
I appreciate that you did want to ever heed my advice or listen to me that there would be some outstanding funds that council couldn't or shouldn't just assume we could sign off on. And I did mention a millage last time. So with that being said, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 22-01 with a change regarding the right of referendum, basically stating the revenue bonds will be issued with a vote of the electors, period.
No, what this states is it does not require a vote of the people.
I know, that's what it states.
And what we talked about last week is totally different from what we're talking about today. Totally different subjects, same concept, but different.
Revenue bonds are supported by the revenues, the proven revenues of the system, of the business, which is what it is. They're backed by the full faith and credit of the city by its general obligation as a backing, but it doesn't eat up our bonding capacity if it's a revenue bond with only the general obligation behind it. It, we can move forward, these things move forward like this in this method all the time.
But it does state that the bond will be paid with revenues from the, generated by the water fund?
Correct, and all of our work to date is showing that we will not need a rate increase for this bond to be approved. So we're in good shape for this amount of work to be done.
Understood, my motion is still there on the floor.
Do we have support for the motion? Read that motion back that you said just...
I simply said I approve the Resolution 22-01, except changing the last page, right of referendum. The revenue bonds will be issued with a vote of the electors, period. This $10 million should be going to the people, in my opinion. They've complained about the water rate increases that we've hit them with in the past. And granted, you're not expecting to have to do that again, but the possibility does exist. And if this, if this is really such a good idea, the people should have no problem jumping on board.
I might be totally out of place.
It will not delay what you're trying to do, my understanding, to file some paperwork with the state. You told us originally you did not need council permission to do what you were doing.
Mr. Boshaw, this is totally different than last week. This is 18 months of planning for work that we've planned. That IT, that $50 million ITA is a dream that hopefully they come back and provide us some possible free sources of money. This mandating that we have a vote to make this happen is really going to change this process. And it's not going to work, it's not going to work well for us. The notice of intent that we're applying for, or the notice to apply, is strictly allowing us to do the resolution, put an ad in the paper, a quarter-page ad, and to notify the people. The people have an opportunity to come and voice their concerns. And then at that time, there's can be decisions made. But the mandate that there's an automatic vote, no. I don't even know how that would go over. It would completely set us back and stop this project in its tracks.
We have a rate structure from rates that were set by a previous council that supports this debt we're going after right now. This has been part of the plan, takes a lot of planning to do this. The rates already support it. This is something that we have to move forward on. I could go off and talk about philosophically about representative democracies and those kinds of things, where people vote for you, this council to make decisions for them, which is what has happened already. I think a referendum on something that's, when it's not necessary, is going to tip everything upside down.
But it's $10 million.
When the rates already support it.
It's $10 million. I think the people should have a say in it.
This, let me, if I may. This, and I want to make sure I'm understanding you as well, Mr. Boshaw, that you're not confusing this with future projects, and you're...
Irregardless, irregardless, I do not believe this council, or any council, should be spending $10 million. And the only way the public can stop it is if they collect 10% of the total number of eligible voters within a 45-day period. I disagree with that.
Okay, if I may finish with my question, please. This is a continuation of a process that was already agreed to by prior council. Is this correct or incorrect?
Correct.
Mr. Jordan, can you speak to that for me? This is correct?
This is correct.
So this was already approved? This, we knew this was coming because this was part of a schedule that was set?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, it's been 18 months in the making.
If we stop this, we're stopping something that we've already set in motion. We're stopping progress we're making. This is for continuation of work that's already being done on the plant? This is not for brand-new work?
It may not stop it, but it's certainly going to be a huge obstacle to overcome. And that obstacle may happen. If the people read the notice and say, hey, they have that opportunity to make that happen.
Okay.
Via this notice of intent to bond.
I just wanted to make that clear. So this is, it's not something about a new thing. This is a continuation of a process already set in motion by prior council.
Correct.
And I believe it's... It's the next step in the financing process that began last year when the city approved and submitted its applications for funding water supply system improvements through the Michigan Finance Authority's Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Program. Correct?
Correct.
Okay, so at this point, we do have a motion. Do we have support for the motion? Do we not have support for the motion? Hearing none, then the motion dies on the floor. Do we have...
I make a motion for approval of the Notice of Intent Resolution for Water Supply System Bonds.
Do we have support for that?
I just have a couple of questions for Jeff, if I may. Help myself and TV land understand what you're exactly saying in regards to this, with this proposal that you want us to look at today.
Alls I'm asking you to do is to agree and approve the resolution to release the intent to bond to the public so we can publicize it, put it in the newspaper, and then after the 45-day review, we come back here with the bonding request. Our bond council will come here. I think they come on site, they give the download on everything. And at that point, when we start bonding, that's when we're the axis of the stone, and that's when we have obligations. Am I off track, Pat?
And it also give an opportunity for any citizens that do have a concern with this bonding at that time to come give public comments or statements at that time as well.
Correct, and if I can't advertise this resolution today, I'll be back here next time to ask the same thing. But at that time, our window gets so much smaller to make all of the deadlines that are necessary to make this project go.
Okay, we do have a motion by...
I'm not quite done. So to pay that back, you're saying right now you can pay it back with the funds that are coming in?
Correct.
You wouldn't have to, because I have concerns too, is water rates going up, right? So does everybody else in the city, not a question about it. I think that's a major concern for families. I mean, it's a huge dollar, but you're doing a great job at fixing everything, don't get me wrong. But I just want to make sure that the rates don't have to go up if we do go through with this. And if you can afford to pay out of what's happening today, this bond, it's not a bad thing.
And you're saying, don't increase the rates. I wholeheartedly agree. I can't promise you...
No, I know.
The work that we're doing on today's rates aren't going to increase the rates slightly. I mean, I can almost promise you a 5% increase. I mean, that's just the way things are going right now. But we've done our work three years ago to start increasing these rates to accumulate the monies that we need to do the projects that we seen coming. Today's rates support this work without an increase. That does not mean that we don't have to increase rates for cost of living, the whole gauntlet of things that are happening, and additional capital improvement projects that may be planned. I'm not going to promise a zero rate increase. I can't do that until we crunch the numbers more.
A rate structure that comes from a Tom Tracyak or somebody has increases built right into it that we adopt. And we say, next year, two years from now, three years from now, this is what the rate's going to look like. Because it just keeps up with inflation, it keeps up with the cost of everything going up, wages, capital, equipment, everything. And that's what we haven't done here for many, many years, was have that rate structure that allowed us to maintain the system and to build a chest of money to do this work with. Now we have to do it, and that's what we've done.
And I hope I'm not misspeaking, but that Tracyak spreadsheet, I believe we're on that maintenance rate increase now. The big ones are behind us, and now we're just floating through the regular inflation and trying to stay ahead of the work that we have planned, the future work. And again, everything I've been doing is to get as much free money as we can to do the work necessary without an increase. Jeff, do you know, I'm sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Forgive me, but these recent water rate increases, the public was told that those were necessary to help pay for the lead service line replacements, an unfunded mandate that came down from the state. We told the residents these increases needed to be done just to pay for those. Now you're saying that you have enough money to cover the payments on a $10 million bond? So what, we raised the rates too much? That you actually have leftover money to put toward this? But yet you're saying that you may ask for a 5% increase just because of the whatever inflation or what have you?
That's a guess, Mr. Boshaw.
Yeah, I understand that.
The spreadsheet states an annual increase every year forever. I can't tell you there's going to be zero. If there's zero, that means we're not going to do stuff. Zero increase doesn't keep up with where we're at, and it puts us in the hole again.
I understand that, but you're basically saying to cover this $10 million bond, you have enough money coming in right now to do that?
Correct, we do. Our rate structure...
How can that be when we needed those increases to pay for the lead service line replacements?
Because we collected the money, put it in the bank to replace windows. And to get the free money, we have to take a loan to get loan forgiveness.
I understand that.
I feel like, I feel like I'm in a vacuum right now. I don't really know how to explain this. We got a motion on the floor, we should get a second.
We do have a motion on the floor, and I'd like to find out if we have support for it or not. I will support the motion. Any further discussion in regards to the motion directly? Mr. Demme, please call roll.
Councilor Moore.
Yes.
Councilor Boshaw.
No.
Councilor DuBord.
Aye.
Councilor Flath.
Yes.
Mayor Hamlin.
Yes. Moving on, new business item number three. Approval of John Deere 60G Compact Excavator, Water Department.
Administration is seeking council's approval to purchase a John Deere G-C... I'm sorry, 60G compact excavator from McCoy Construction locally here in Escanaba at a cost not to exceed $81,000, which will include possible contingencies. And Jeff, can I explain the necessity of this equipment?
And I explained in the workshop, this is a tool that's going to be in addition to current digging things, and it's going to enable us to become more efficient at our in-house lead service line work, main replacement, hydrant replacement, sewer repair work in alleys. This excavator is small, but still stout. It's a pretty large mini. It's still small enough to transport easily and not in need of a dump truck or a lowboy.
Lowboy?
I move approval.
Support.
Mr. Demme.
Councilor Boshaw.
Yes.
Councilor Moore.
Yes.
Councilor DuBord.
Aye.
Councilor Flath.
Yes.
Mayor Hamlin.
Yes.
Thank you.
New business item number four. Recommendation Clean Energy Program, Electric Department.
The energy waste reduction mandate with the Public Act 342, when the Public Act 342 sunsetted on December 31st last year, left approximately $355,000 in our program. Administration recommends using $175,000 to fund the new clean energy program being offered by the MPPA for the 2022 calendar year. And Jerry Perkela has specifics on that. So I included in the council packet. So some of you may not know what happened in the past, but last fall, the, a notice came out, the EWR mandate ended on December 31st, 2021, for municipal utilities. The electric ordinance was amended to stop collecting the EWR funds as of December 31st, 2021. Remaining EWR funds amounting to $355,000 must be used for energy optimization program or returned to the customers. The Michigan Public Power Association, MPPA, announced that they plan to start their own clean energy program for those municipalities that desire to continue with an energy optimization program. So that's kind of a quick recap. The clean energy program that MPPA solicited, well, MPPA solicited those bids. They chose Franklin Energy to implement the 2022 Clean Energy Program. The Clean Energy Program will be similar to the rebates from the previous program for both residential and commercial customers, along with new programs for low-income households and electric vehicle charging stations. Administrative cost will be 30% of the total cost of the program compared to 60% for our previous program. So more funds will go toward actual rebates to our customers. So then the recommendation, administration recommends the city join MPPA's clean energy program administered by Franklin Energy and commit one hundred seventy-five thousand for the twenty-twenty-two calendar year. I would like to add, this was presented to the Electrical Advisory Committee last week, and they supported this recommendation. A little more data, the, we, we collected about two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year on the old program. With the lower administrative costs, that's why I'm recommending one hundred seventy-five thousand, and this will allow for about one hundred twenty-two thousand dollars for rebates. And, and that'll be split roughly a third residential and two-thirds commercial. Questions?
So Jerry, you're saying the leftover monies from the one seventy-five compared to the three fifty-five, you're giving that back?
No, the one seventy-five, when you say give it back, the one seventy-five is half of what we collected, so I'm proposing that we use that for the rebate program. So after you remove the administrative costs of that one seventy-five, one twenty-two five hundred will go towards actual rebates for, you know, to promote energy optimization. Then the other one seventy-five will hold that, and if this program runs smoothly, I would recommend using the rest of those funds next year.
Let me ask you a question. If we just delegate one seventy-five to this program and the money's left over the one seventy-five, how much would or be calculated that each resident would get returned?
It's a good question. I don't know how we would return it. The, the money was collected over twelve years, so I mean, I don't know how you would find all the individuals and companies that contribute, contributed to the program. I asked utilities and they said it would just be a nightmare to try to do that.
Nope, and I believe it is, but we had two options to choose from.
Right.
So how would we do that?
If someone has a calculator, seven thousand meters roughly, and it wouldn't be split equally, obviously, commercial customers pay, paid more into the system. So, but yeah, if you took one hundred twenty-two thousand divided by seven thousand, that would be the average. So.
Seventeen bucks. Yeah. Seventeen point four.
Okay. So seventeen dollars per, per meter, so.
And I'm just, we have to take into account, if we can, the fact that, I think this was, we talked before, this is a regressive tax, in my opinion, the people who, everyone has to pay it, but only the people that have four, five, brand, five-star appliances take advantage of it. And other, the rest of the people can't. But some people did take advantage of it, so should they get this if they can bust back too, or do they get theirs and they have their rebate? I think trying, I think trying to figure all that out would be, would be a nightmare.
I just.
I like the fact that it's only thirty percent of the cost as opposed to six.
Oh, I agree. The admin, administration cost is, is a lot lower than the previous program. Just reading about what the benefits are offered with this, it's just not specific enough, like you get fifty dollars back for recycling your appliances, but it has to meet certain appliances to get it. There's, you know, the charging station rebates at two fifty, you have to have a level two. I mean, there's a lot of things I'm reading here that, is this really going to be beneficial for our low-income residents, or is it going to be beneficial for our current residents? Is it going to be used a lot? I just don't feel like I have enough, is this already in effect right now? Is this Franklin Company already running this program? Or is it hasn't even been implemented yet?
They're, they're implementing it, about half of the municipals in the state of Michigan have, have joined. So it, it is a program that is currently being implemented. Franklin Energy has been doing this for several years, and it's, it's in this, their, the documentation I included, but I believe over twenty years Franklin Energy has been in business, so it's, it's an established company.
Sure. Are there any municipalities in the Upper Peninsula already on this program?
Yes, I believe it's the city of Wakefield is on it.
And it, I'm sorry. We're not, we can't, we changed the ordinance and we stopped that, that fee on the, on the bill. And we're not going to re-implement that, but what we're going to do is just use up the money that we have. We can decide later on whether, if it's a really good program, we can put that fee back on the bills if we want to, but not for the couple of years.
Jerry, could you give us some examples of what residential or commercial customers have been doing to, to get some of this money back?
Yeah, and the old program, like I said, was very similar, buying Energy Star products like refrigerators, dehumidifiers, HVAC-type equipment, air conditioners, energy-efficient blower motors. So that would be more residential. Commercial, it covers, well, again, with residential too, LED lighting, non-commercial compressors for cooling equipment. So there, there's a whole range of, you know, rebates that was used on the, the old program. And the old program ranged between about eighty thousand and a hundred thousand roughly per year in rebates. So what we're offering, what, what I'm proposing is about one hundred twenty-two thousand dollars in rebates. Does that help?
Oh, I remember, I remember the old program. I'm asking about this new program to see if it's, is this something because we stopped that old program? I understand we're implementing a new one, and it has administrative savings, but I guess how many residents use the old program? Because are we going to see, you know, I'm just curious, how many use the old program? Is it beneficial to start this new program for our residents?
Yeah, there were several per month. I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't single digits, there, there were, you know, in the hundreds that used it. So, you know, it's, it's basically, like I said, all the Energy Star-type products, LED lighting. Franklin Energy has additional programs that, that the old program didn't have. So they, if you read the part on the, you know, the low-income house, or households, I think it's a nice program, and it, it gives an opportunity for those that paid into the program and didn't collect, an opportunity to collect.
No, I appreciate you answering all my questions, Jerry. Thank you.
We're seeking approval?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Demay? I'm sorry, any further discussion on this topic? Is this just a one-year agreement?
That's correct, one year.
Thank you.
Could, I just one quick question. Could we do our own program?
Well, we thought about that. The, the time and effort to implement our own program, I, I talked to the utility department. They, again, it would be very difficult to run our own program. The, the amount of labor that would be involved, so yeah, they didn't like that recommendation.
Mr. Demay, please call roll.
Councilor Boshak?
Yes.
Councilor Moore?
Yes.
Councilor Dubois?
Yes.
Councilor Flott?
Yes.
Mayor Amel?
Yes. Moving on to new business item number five. Board seeks approval to create an ad hoc committee for the purpose of reviewing proposals received in response to the RFQ sent out for jail property and making a recommendation to council. Explanation is, in the interest of transparency, transparency and clarity, I would like to create a committee to review the proposals that have been received in response to the RFQ sent out for the jail property for the purpose of reviewing and scoring said proposals and making a recommendation to council on which proposal this committee finds most beneficial to the community. How many members are you looking?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Have you already decided the people, or you're just looking for approval to commit? I mean, make a committee?
Looking for approval to form the committee, I can name off the members.
Okay. Question is, what is your age range within those eight people? I did not take a poll of ages. I did not take a poll of. Yeah, well, Jim's, I don't know who's on it, so I'm just asking if you know the age ranges that are going to be on this, because that makes a big difference. We'll, we'll play it safe. We'll go, we'll go from, from Jim McNeil to Patrick Jordan and possibly beyond, age-wise, respectfully speaking.
I feel young, but don't say that anymore.
Have we done this before? Have we created a committee? A group to look over RFQs and make recommendations? I'm just asking, because I, we didn't do it before, so I'm asking. It seems necessary, as we don't have any guidelines set down for this process.
Previous councils have done such a thing.
Ultimately, it's going to come in front of this council to prove. And I think, you know, we have four proposals. Personally, I think they should all be given a chance to come and put a show on in front of y'all before you make a decision.
Correct.
All, all those committees, they're going to do, they just kind of go through, discuss them, score them, and bring those scores to you guys to look at, but then you're going to make your own decision.
Okay, so who's deciding the format of the scoring? Is this a pre-format? I just, I'm trying to understand this whole committee thing. So is the scoring a pre, pre-standard scoring sheet?
It's a, it's a sheet that we had to come up with ourselves.
Okay, so you guys decide on the scoring sheet?
Yeah, it has, I think there's a hundred and sixty-five, a hundred and seventy-five total points on it, with ten items listed, all of various weights. It was Ethel Gold and me and Jim McNeil that circulated it and put it together. So it's a, it's a pretty fair, pretty fair scoring sheet. We tried to be as broad as we could with it and really look at all the different variables that are involved. I can circulate that to you if you want to.
I would love to. I would love to. I guess I understand that you want to form a committee and get a small group of eight people. Are we also, is this committee going to look to get public feedback, surveys? I guess I'm curious to see what the public would say in the community of Esconaba. We have four, you know, RFQs out there. I would have liked to, personal opinion is, I'd like to get the input, a survey out there for the citizens to review and, and rank them or vote on them. Then we have a full, a full feedback from the citizens on what they want to see built over there. That's just my opinion? Or, go ahead, no, you go ahead.
Some, some of the criteria, it takes into account the city's master plan.
Yes.
Which had a lot of public input, and the North Shore redevelopment plan, which had a lot of public input.
It had public input, but if you look at your age ranges during that time, you did not see the younger age range. And so it's, it's not a factual based. So I think what we need to do is look at an opportunity to say, it's not hard to put a survey out there. It isn't, there's, actually, you could do Survey Monkey for free if you wanted to, there's no real, real cost electronically. You can print paper ones to be filled out and left at City Hall. You can allow the public input to say, what do we want built over here? Because this is for the generations moving forward within the city. If I sit here and make a committee of eight people, I restrict kind of a lot of that ability for the public input. Now, we still have public hearings, I agree with you, but if we can get that prior, then we have an understanding of what the people and the citizens really want. I mean, it, to, to develop a survey?
Yeah.
I don't think it'll take that long at all.
And you, and they can break them down by age range, and group them by age range.
Yep, so you actually, when you get the results, you can actually filter the analytics to actually see age range. You can actually include additional questions to find out, location, there's a lot of different analytical backends of the dashboard that you can see from surveys.
I'm going, go ahead, Mr. Boshak.
Just with his comment in mind regarding public input, have, have the proposals been released to the public yet?
No.
Shouldn't they be?
I imagine so.
I would say no.
But.
It's going to be discussed publicly, and there's going to be a public presentation here that the public can see, they can watch on TV, they can attend. But to circulate a bunch of what I consider proprietary proposals that certain people put a lot of money into, I respect the fact that they have a lot of money invested in these proposals, and I, and I even had an argument with one, with one of the proposers about it. They don't want to see their ideas taken and stolen, handed off to somebody else, and I can understand that. Now, everything, would it be a foible document? I don't know. It'd be a legal, a legal opinion on that, but.
I, I would disagree with you as far as the city keeping this confidential. None of them included any such thing in their cover letters saying this was proprietary and confidential. It's in, anyway.
I just think I would agree with Ron too, that I think if we made it public and tied it to a survey, people actually visually get to see what their proposal is, what's included. You know, we don't, I mean, if we need to remove or redact company names or business names, that's fine, we can look at redacting that. But as long as the people can see a visual of what could possibly or potentially be built in both property sites, and I just think we could really get a good buy-in. And then you know what? We did it right. That's my opinion. We did it right.
I have a couple of questions here. We do have public forum here at city council meetings every time we meet, correct? And the public is welcome to come in and share their opinions, thoughts and ideas on any topic within the municipality during that time, correct? So people could have, if they had so chosen, come in and, and brought opinions, things like that. This, let me finish here. An RFQ was sent out about this property, correct? The previous process was also an RFQ sent out, and when proposals were brought in, did we invite the public to?
We only had one proposal.
Okay. Okay, just, I, I just want to get some clarity here so I understand, because right now.
They were accounting that's the one that we, we, we all wanted to accept, they wanted first, the common board had accepted, and then we followed up on a couple of those.
Okay. Now, four people responded, or four companies responded to the RFQ. We set a deadline of January twenty-first, correct? Okay, so people that wanted to do something with this, followed the guidelines in that RFQ, submitted their information on time in a professional manner to the city. So suggestions that could have been made were, were received by the city administration, correct?
Yes.
And you didn't receive any other ideas or concepts from any other groups?
No.
Okay, so we received every, everything that we, we could have by that point in time in response to the RFQ. And these people, these companies did put their time and their work into it. We received them, and at this point, what we're suggesting is putting those out there for the community to vet, is that the, what would be a good term for that?
Critique.
Critique, give us your opinion. What do you want to see there? So I'm uncertain how our, our proposers are going to take the news that we've decided to.
Slow down.
Take their, take their proposals and not just consider them and work with them, but we're going to push it out and let the public do, look at them, read them, come up with whatever they want to, and drag the process out longer. That's not something we indicated in the first place. That might, that might make these people less willing to work with us because they may not trust our process because we've just changed it. I'm, I'm just suggesting something, I'm not accusing anybody of doing anything wrong, I'm just speaking a moment here.
Okay, if I'm, if I may, why would, why would releasing the proposals to the public delay anything?
I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying we can't release them, but the, the suggestion of, let's do a survey.
Right.
And then, that, that does delay things.
Well, why does that delay that can, indifference to a board that you create? What would be the difference of a delay? If you, if, if we move to a survey and get the feedback, what's the difference of a possible delay of your committee?
Are, so, are you suggesting we have, we create a, a committee and release it to the public? Or we only release it to the public and don't have a committee?
My recommendation would be release it to the public, get the feedback and see where it goes. If, if we're all over the board and we're just not getting an accurate reading from the public, maybe we can look at considering your board or a committee. I don't know. At this point, it's not going to slow anything down because your board could slow everything down. You have eight people that could go back and forth and back and forth for a long period of time if you can't all have a consensus. So there's no guarantee that your board's going to move faster than a survey. If I say I put a survey out to the citizens and say, this survey is out for a month, or four weeks, or whatever, let's collect as much data as we can from the citizens. We have a timeframe, you said it.
So then at that point, you would suggest that council work as a committee of the whole to do the reviewing?
Yes, I believe we, we would get the results, let's see, let's see what's going on. Let's see, let's see what's going on.
And not create a, okay.
That, that's, that's my recommendation is, I'd rather let's hold up on this.
When we do this, then, so in, in doing, in so doing that, because the, the committee that I was recommending putting together included representatives from the county who have a vested interest because they own some of the property. And at this point, we have chosen to exclude the county completely.
The county can participate in the survey. Why not?
And Ms. Moore?
By forming the committee of experts, if you will, representing the county, representing anybody who has an interest in this, this is not excluding anybody, this is putting it through a committee for a recommendation. And I don't think the committee is going to say, we absolutely agree that it should be this person. It's the committee's duty to review all of the applications, and like, we're talking about grading them, and then it's only the grading and the vetting, if you will, then it's brought to the council. So nothing is going to be decided there. It's all going to be brought to the council. Citizens will have a chance to come to the meeting, the, the agenda is posted, we get comments from the city or from the citizens. There's nothing that is going to be secret or anything like that. It's just a panel of experts who have an interest, the county, the...
Economic development.
Economic development. They should all be involved in at least giving their opinion, even though it is going to be the council's decision ultimately. But I think that it's fair to get somebody from the county's opinion and, and ads. Why not involve them in a, in a focused committee to give their opinion, and then it comes to the council? That, that to me makes more sense than doing a survey because people, people are not experts on this. Yes, they could say, I would prefer this over that, yes, but I think that's, that's the next step. I think the experts, if you will, need to make some recommendations or analyze things before we go there. And, and nobody here is, is going to say, we're going to exclude anybody, and we're not excluding the citizens or anything like that. We're, we're, we're actually collecting more information from experts so when it comes here, that there can be a whole broad spectrum of, of analysis, if you will, from the proposals. So there's no restrictions. One, not at all. I, I, I disagree with that.
And I could see, I could see your side of it, too. I look as an eight-person possible committee, that I don't know those eight people, and I don't know if any of those eight people have special interest, connections with these developers. I don't know that. All I can say is, I want to hear from the citizens that want to see what is going to be developed in there. And these citizens, we have a lot of experts out there as citizens and opinions, and their own research they can do on themselves. We have a younger generation here that we want to continue flourishing. If we are going to get something that draws people down here, these young people want to see that. And that's my opinion. Now, the survey could be totally opposite of what we get result-wise, but let's give the citizens the right to speak. We originally proposed, and the council agreed, to have the original project go over there. It fell through. We, we proposed it. We agreed to it. We had every, every public comment session going on. Now we have an opportunity with four options coming our way, four possible developers. Not one, four. This is a great opportunity to hear from the citizens to say, what do you want to see developed there? I don't want an eight-person committee that I don't even know who's on. I mean, yeah, they're experts, then you know what? Those experts can come to the public hearings. Those experts from the county, that Ed Legault can come speak up here and propose that during a public hearing as well. But we can say, here are the results from the survey, Ed. What's your opinion on this? County members, come, give us your, here's your results. Tell us, what, what's your feedback?
In the interest of time, please, because we're accomplishing absolutely nothing right now. So if there is no support for this, if there's no support from council for this, then we don't do it. So is there support for that creation of a board, or is there not support?
I, I support it.
Mayor, I think you, I think you have the authority as the mayor to put an ad hoc committee together and appoint members to it, especially members that aren't a member of this body, or, I mean...
Technically, I believe I possibly do. I have been very interested in not working unilaterally and trying to get everyone to work together. I'd rather seek opinions, and if all council is completely against this, I don't see that as a, as a healthy move for our city government to, to strike out against all of council. However, if we don't do this, I would like to ask Mr. DuBois to head up the survey and, and get that accomplished for us.
If that's what, if that's what you would, if this, if that, if council would prefer we do a public survey based on all four proposals, and then I would like you to head that up and, and get that accomplished. Set a, set a timeline?
And quickly, if we could, because...
And handle that.
This is something that could have been done over the last couple of months as the RFQ was out, too. We could have gotten feedback from the community and...
Mr. Beauchamp?
Just a comment, back when the city was looking to sell its power plant, we had, I believe there were three different entities interested in it the first time around, some of them with some very elaborate plans, some major players from Wisconsin were looking to buy it or expand. And each of them were given an opportunity to make a presentation during a, I think we called it a town hall meeting. I believe there were quite a few people that showed up for those. It's just a thought that we could invite...
That, that was...
Each of the four in.
I mean, that, so under this, like, we didn't, so the committee was to review the four proposals received, create and host a public forum where each proposing group may be given equal time and opportunity to present their project proposal to the committee. It would be, at that point, it would be a presentation-only format.
Yep.
Then they will score each proposal based on the criteria they have. When they make the recommendation to council, those same presentations would be made to council where there's a public forum and people can come and comment. That was the intention of this committee.
So the public would or wouldn't be invited to hear each of the forums?
Absolutely.
It would be there?
They would, they would be, they could...
So the committee would hear it once?
The committee would create and host a public forum where each proposing group may be given equal time and opportunity to present their project proposal to the committee. It's not a closed thing. But it is a focused thing because as Mr. DuBois mentioned, eight people with differing opinions can take some time. Nine thousand some people with differing opinions can also take some time. And we've all seen results of surveys we've done in the past. I believe we've worked with the MEDC, who did a study on what the best land use was and gave us a recommendation. And I believe we have actually done surveys in the past, asking the residents what they would like to see down there, and I believe it, it is why we keep looking in the direction of the projects that are proposed.
Which is what, what we asked for in the RFQ, and what was asked for before in the RFQ, was that, those exact parameters, I guess.
So once again, I'm seeking approval to create a committee. An ad hoc committee for the purpose of reviewing the proposals received in response to the RFQ set out for the jail property and making a recommendation to council. This committee will review the proposals. This committee will create and host a public forum where each proposing group may be given equal time and opportunity to present their project. This committee will score each proposal presentation according to the criteria, make a recommendation to council. This committee would be consisting of, without the use of the word "experts." I would sit on it myself, Patrick Jordan, city manager of Esconaba, James McNeil, city assessor, Scott Sezak, executive director of Downtown Development Authority, Emily Bougie, county administrator, Patrick Johnson, chair of the Delta County Board of Commissioners, Ed Legault, executive director of the Delta County Economic Development Alliance, and Karen Moore, council member of Esconaba.
If we need a ninth, P.K. Peterson volunteered, too.
We can out Ralph if he's interested.
Yep.
If there's support, please say so. If there's not, let's move in the direction of Mr. DuBois' suggestion and end this issue. We spent a lot of time on this now.
I think we can do the two concurrently, and we, this committee can maybe can move forward with this thing and get toward the middle of March for the public...
It is an ad hoc recommendation committee with absolutely zero power.
And then, at the same time, do the, do the public outreach, the survey.
I'll second the motion.
Is the motion added his part onto it, or?
I believe she made the motion.
Yeah, we...
Mr. DeMay, can we repeat the motion, please, so everyone understands what we're voting on?
Well, you actually read it quite well, and you have it, I'm assuming you wrote it down over there.
I do have it written down, just in case this happened.
Yeah. If you wouldn't mind elaborating once again on that motion, I would appreciate it, because I, I just have it paraphrased for the most part.
Board seeks approval to create an ad hoc committee for the purpose of review, reviewing the proposals received in response to the RFQ set out for the jail property and making a recommendation to council. Do you want the rules as well?
If you...
The rules as follows: They will review the proposals received by the city on Friday, January 21st, in response to the RFQ sent out by Esconaba city manager Patrick Jordan. Two, they will create and host a public forum where each proposing group may be given equal time and opportunity to present their project proposal to the committee and any members of the public present. Score each proposal presentation and make a recommendation only to council. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Did you vote?
I did.
I did not hear, okay.
Aye.
Motion carries.
You can make a motion at this point in time if you want to put a survey out now.
Yeah.
That's my, that's my thing, right?
There you go, yeah.
So if we do these together, it would make sense.
Concurrently.
Are you making a motion?
That's what I'm making.
Are you revisiting that motion combined with his?
That's what I thought we were doing, but that, it didn't happen, so... Who was on first?
I don't know. I mean, you can make two, two motions if you want.
Yeah, I mean...
At this point, we need to make a second motion.
Okay. Second motion is that we enter into monkey survey...
Survey Monkey.
Survey Monkey? Okay, thank you.
To receive public input?
Yeah, okay.
And will you, you will head that up?
Hopefully with assistance, if I can borrow Phil, if he has time available to assist me.
We'll figure it out.
Or Patrick, if that's okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
And then I can use his assistance to make sure we get it out to the right channels.
Yep.
And we work on that together. I'm good with that, so I will, I'm okay, I will second Todd's.
I was hoping you would.
I figured...
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Mayor, before we move on the agenda, can I have, Phil, can you read back the motion for number two? The notice of intent?
The, the survey one, or?
No, the, the intent resolution for the water supply system that Jeff addressed up there. They're, they're very specific about these motions and the minutes and everything else. We just need to make sure that it's right.
You said number two, correct?
Yeah.
Well, if it being a resolution, it's a very lengthy resolution. It's just a move, there's a first and a second.
The motion was to adopt the resolution, to move forward in the notice of intent?
The, the resolution that's been posted in the agenda packet, that was the adoption.
There were few? Okay. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
I have no appointments before me, and we've already explained the, the one that didn't happen. Board, commission, committee reports starting...
I have none.
Excellent, Mr....
The electrical board met last week. As Mr. Percola mentioned, they did discuss and made a recommendation to council to go forward with the new clean energy program. Mr. Percola gave an update on the electrical department general operations. Mainly, there were some poles replaced like they do every year. There, there was an update on the solar project out at the airport. Mr., or Dr. Brown gave some dollar figures on how much money the city has saved since the panels were installed. I believe he mentioned there were 5.6 million kilowatt-hours generated since the solar panels were brought online. His estimate is that there were about $290,000 saved so far in energy costs, approximately $67,000 in tran, in transmission costs. And there are some other cost savings, capacity charges, and so forth that he will be looking into in the near future. That's about it.
Thank you. Mr. Flott?
Oh, I said the Solid Waste Authority Board, they're purchasing probably a new truck with a plow. That's pretty much it.
Mr. DuBois?
Um, yes, I attended the police retirement board. We went through our annual review of our finances of investments for the retirement board. Bob Valentine presented that to us by the end of December of 2021. We had great results. Our investments were up to where we needed to be, so everything looked good in our projections for the police retirement fund. I also attended our library board meeting. Just a reminder that the library that is open on Saturdays now from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. now at the library. In addition, the library is offering a free streaming service for anybody that would like to sign up for. It's called Canopy. It does allow all of our citizens to access and download movies and stream, so it's actually a good service. We've seen an increase in Wi-Fi usage with, which we've had increased around this area, so we see a lot of increase on the usage from our citizens on, on top of that. So right now, the library is looking good, and we have a few, few more programs starting up and, and looking forward to it. So if you want to take a look, you can go to their website and see what other additional programs they're offering.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Any general public comments at this time? Hearing none. Any announcements? Kind of already did that, so... Seeking a motion to adjourn. So moved. Second adjourned.